Okay, it's 10 o'clock. The Brazos County Commissioner will meet in workshop session, May the 26th, 10 a.m. Meeting place is Commissioner's courtroom, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item is called order and the second is presentation by Melinda Smith, Wesley Taylor, and Mark Taylor of Taylor, Trailer Associates. So who wants to start? Okay, Mark?
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity of being here today and hopefully move the ball a little bit farther down the field today. Hopefully all of y'all have a, have a binder with what we'd like to do today. We've got two main goals that we want to accomplish this morning. One is if we can determine any projects that everyone is agreement that you would like to move forward with at this point in time. Two, if there's any funding request on this list that y'all enter agreement that needs to be taken off the table at this point in time. So we're just, we're hoping to narrow it down a little bit more. Once again, as far as funding requests, 1,500, 15,000, 15 million, whatever the court decides on, that's going to get us that much farther down the road. So what we'd like to do first thing this morning is just real quickly go over the list in its entirety so y'all are fully aware of the funding requests that have been submitted to the county. I know there's been requests submitted within the county as well as requests from outside the county. And once again, you may not be fully aware of all of the requests, so we do want you to be aware of that to begin with, then we'll go back and go through the request. As Commissioner Aldrich had brought out last week, as far as obligating these funds, they must be obligated by the end of 2024. So don't feel you need to obligate all of your allocation today. As much as y'all want to obligate, that'll tickle us to death and we'll move forward with, but don't feel that you're under the gun that you have to obligate all the funds today. So if we could, let's just, once again, let's just real quickly go through these lists. These are prioritized based upon the information that y'all completed last week and the priority that you established last week. There again, that is not engraved in stone. That can be adjusted based on the court's desires. So the first thing y'all had, y'all wanted to look at the county and other public entities. And within that, the first thing you wanted to look at were the funding requests related to public health. So within that, we've got the medical examiner's office, mental health facility, the feasibility study for the sanctuary remodel, emergency operations center, HVAC, air purification system, sanctuary remodel, and 361st court remodel. Couple other things I'd like to go back and point out to you. Any of these dollar amounts that are highlighted in blue, those, those dollar amounts were not necessarily attached to the funding request itself. That is a best guess that has been inserted in that to try to get us in the ballpark as best we can at this point in time on that funding. Now this first column that you're looking at here, the first three items we know has been discussed by all of the commissioners. There has been some degree of interest expressed by all of the commissioners. So we moved those up to a first priority. Everything else that you look at on this funding request is going to be, once again, categorized based on the priorities y'all established last week. Then they're going to be listed alphabetically. So as we, as we scroll down the page, the next priority, we've got the county or other public entities, government services. This is the BISD building remodel, the Elmo, is that pronounced Whedon?
Whedon.
Phase two. And there again, there was two requests, one with the bridge and one without the bridge submitted. Feasibility study for the BISD building, feasibility study for the North Wing renovation, Harps Ferry Road work, North work, uh-oh, there I go. Hang on. This is, this is pretty sensitive roller on here. North Wing renovation, Old Reliance. There's, what, four projects on Old Reliance. Road and Bridge Department building expansion, sidewalk construction at Sandy Point Apartments. And then the railroad track on Smetana. And then the next priority is county other, infrastructure, water sewer and drainage. We've got Harris Lane, IGN, I'm sorry guys, my eyes aren't what they used to be. So we're doing the best we can here. IGN Stausland, Saxon Road, Whedon Loop, Wixson Creek, Willow Lane Bridge, and then another Willow Lane Bridge. Wilcox, I'm sorry, thank you. Then we've got the county other public entities broadband. That one, we did not put a dollar amount in. That one, that's a wild card. You can put a portion of your allocation, or you can put the entire allocation that's due to the county. There is definitely a need for broadband. Broadband definitely takes some dollars and you could utilize every dollar you have allocated if the county so chose. So that one, we did not actually plug a dollar amount in. The final one on the county public entities list is the elder care or Are You Okay software program and standing that up. And then the community center or rec center. And we did get a clarification on that this morning. It does not include the Sadie Thomas Park. Second priority that y'all chose is nonprofit organizations. And there again, within that column, the first, first priority was negative economic impact. We've got the Brazos County Community Action Program, Brazos Valley Food Bank, Central District Missionary Baptist Association, Friends for Life, Scotty's House, and Unlimited Potential. Each of these requests, I might point out, the request in its entirety is in your binder. So when we go back and go through more detail, we'll be more than happy to look at, at those specific ones that you have any interest in. Third priority was privately owned businesses with negative economic impact. And that's the Fawn Meadows HOA Association. Fourth priority is the individual household assistance. At the top of that is the negative economic impact. And there again, the housing assistance program. And then the Greenleaf Lane Culvert Crossing replacement, which we can, we can discuss further as we go into this. If you'll notice over the right-hand side of those first two pages we provided you, we did put down the total amount for each of those four priorities that you listed. The amount that y'all had initially projected to be placed in each of those programs and, and what the balance was in those specific programs. If you'll take a, take a quick look at that, what you're looking at, and once again, we were using with the rough figures of 43 million. The request that you have at this point in time, not counting any actual dollar amount placed in there for the broadband service, is 125.5 million. That puts you in the whole 82 and a half million dollars. I'd also like to point out, based on the priorities that y'all established, there are two funding requests that did not fit in those priorities. And once again, that does not mean that they cannot be put back in there if y'all so chose. It was just not on the established list of priorities that y'all established last week. And that is two of the broadband projects that were submitted by privately owned businesses. There were requests that had previously been submitted that were funded through other sources. That's the antibody infusion center and the body scanners for the sheriff's department. There's one project that was submitted at this point in time, based on the information that was submitted and based entirely on that information, it does appear to be an ineligible project as far as ARPA funds. And that's through the St. Joseph Health System. There are definitely funds that can be expended in conjunction with healthcare systems. If y'all so choose, we can dig into that one farther and get additional information. But it seemed like a large portion of that request related to the reimbursement of salaries for staff. If those staff have been paid, then that's kind of a shaky ground and, and ARPA does not encourage the reimbursement of paid expenses for salaries. But there again, that's another one that we can definitely put back in the mix and get further information on. I know that's short and sweet. I know that's fast. If you go back to the top of that page, you look at the, at the actual award amount. This is getting it down to the dollars. What you currently have allocated is a little over 1.9 million, leaving you roughly 42 and a half million dollars to allocate. Once again, it's our desire that a portion of these funds will be allocated to move forward with by the time we leave today's meeting. We're not requesting, we're not expecting you to allocate all of these funds. It's just something that, that everyone has a strong desire about and would likely to move forward with. Then we will obtain any additional information if it's needed on that particular activity. And then we would be coming back presenting that to Commissioner's Court for a final determination. All right. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I had a question. Which, I don't see any note, indication as to whether or not these funds are, or this use is qualified for the Treasury's guidelines for the amount that's not in lost revenue versus the ones that do qualify.
Okay. Good question. We wanted to try it in this morning's meeting. We did want to try to make it as simple for y'all as can, as we can. With the funds that you have available, with the requests that are here, we have no doubt that we'll be able to take the amount of funds that we need to, if you will, and place above the line, and then place the remainder of the funds below the line. So we did not want to throw one additional thing in there to possibly confuse the matter. But if you take a look at the first category, public health, all of that can be placed above the line to meet the criteria there.
That answers my questions?
Okay. And now, as well, as some, as some of the funding farther down can, can go above the line as well.
Okay. And one question I had, and particularly sensitive to me, is IGN Stausland Straub. Why was that put in a category that was not the same as the other county other public entities government services funding for Road and Bridge projects?
Okay, let me catch up with.
Okay. Because there's no bridge involved there. And so it doesn't fall under the water sewer drainage and all the other things in that category fall under water sewer and drainage.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry. So that project in particular had a significant amount of utility line relocation for water sewer lines. And the street repair appeared to be secondary to the relocation of the utilities, based on the information that was provided to us in the request for funding.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure that that's true. We've got three, I believe it's 3.1 million dollars allocated in this year's budget in capital for the project. And 4 and a half million would be over what that would be. This has been pushed in capital improvements along. The, what the last report that I got from the folks at Road and Bridge is, is with the only having partial funding for what would be a $6 million project, that this, or 6 and a half million dollar project, that they were planning on doing it in two phases. One phase would be is to do the utility relocation and right away acquisitions and the plan, which I think they're 100% planned and they're waiting on, they're waiting on a little bit of right away. But that they were going to do it in two phases.
So is phase one?
That's what I heard from Road and Bridge. So I'm kind of curious. The amount, the 4 and a half million seems like more than what we have allocated for Road and Bridge and what they were going to use. And if that were the case, I think the way that Road and Bridge had the project scheduled to be completed, it's already budgeted because this is partially budgeted. It's been rolled forward and rolled forward and rolled forward because, and Road and Bridge has never had the total amount of allocation and capital to be able to do the entire project. So where we are now is there's part of it allocated or they were going to use it. But then that, that still doesn't add up to 7 and a half million dollars. I guess, are we looking, are we looking at estimates that that cost had increased?
So there's likely two things at play. This could be a request that we received prior to the budget being established for this fiscal year where it would have been known to Road and Bridge that those funds would be made available.
Yeah, I don't see the Road and Bridge folks here. I'd like to kind of, okay, there is Fred's there. Sorry about that. You're hiding behind the.
That's all good.
No, Fred, you'll have to come to the podium.
Okay. So I guess what we've understood is we can split the project up. We hadn't done that yet. So prior to those discussions, the total estimated cost of the project was 6 and a half million. We can look at splitting it up so we don't have to incur that whole amount. And that, the most reasonable way to split that would be water line and then probably road in, in two sections. But if we can get funding for all of it at once, that's great too.
Okay. Well, the question, the question is, is what's actually of this, what's estimated to be 4 and a half million dollars here, what of that is actually already in the capital improvements budget that we approved?
None.
None. Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding too. I, I don't know that we've ever set aside 3 and a half million for IGN. And I think there's money there. There's projects. Y'all have always had lists of projects with estimates based on that day. And those projects were prioritized by whatever, at that time, their priority. But we'd never, I don't believe, stuck in 3 million for this project, 2 million for that one or anything. I don't think there's ever been.
That's correct.
That's just not the way it normally happens, I don't believe.
Well, maybe after having heard from numerous people on IGN and after the delays and the way things have been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back on completing this project, that the county, prior to me being a commissioner, was stated that it would be done when the closure of Wade and Straub Road intersections. So Union Pacific could put in the siding that was there. And this has just been pushed back and pushed back and pushed back. And we've heard from numerous people here in the last, in a few of the Commissioner's Court meetings that, and I agree with them, that this is not a safe route for transit currently and certainly will not be a safe route for transit in the future. As we continue to see Winding Creek and all of the residential development that's happening beyond IGN. So I'm, I'm very sensitive to this project being in any type of way presented as to where it might have a lesser priority than we have heard from citizens that it has and that has been delayed for as long as it's been delayed since it was promised to be done by Brazos County many, many years ago.
So I'm just saying that I don't think there's ever been money set aside for any specific project. And then number two, I think the original discussion that may have happened years ago, it did not include the widening that we're now working on to get and straightening up. I think the original was going to be just to upgrade those and not, I mean, because we didn't have all the subdivisions out there at that time. So the delay may be a good thing because if we'd have spent whatever it was, 2 or 3 million dollars out there to upgrade kind of the same road that we have today, I don't know that we'd be looking at spending another six to, to do what we need to do out there today. So I don't think the delay was necessarily because of, you know, any particular thing. There were lots of things going on, but I, there was not, it wasn't that, it was promised, we decided we'd put it off. I don't think that was the case.
May I address that Judge?
Sure.
My tenure on this Commissioner's Court, I recall that we discussed, as the judge has mentioned, we discussed and we were in agreement that it needed to be done, but we never allocated money. And, you know, I have heard it over and over. I'm not the Commissioner there, so I didn't address it. But I think it's time that we put things in place. We realize that this project is important. The Commissioner's Court does. But we've never, number one, promised funding. And, and, and because of so many other emergency concerns, we haven't had the money.
Well, that, once again, I go back to what I have been advocating for, for now, I would say at least four years.
Yes.
Is that when the interest rate was low and it was lower than the rate of the cost of design, the cost of materials and labor, that we should have used debt service in order to fund and catch up with the backlog of 250 million dollars worth of projects that Road and Bridge has identified to us clearly. And I'm just at the point to where this needs to be addressed. And this is money that we have here that will allow us to get caught up on some of the priorities that have been brought to our attention with concerns from the public. And I really think that, you know, this is a particular issue for me. And I realize that the rearrangement of the budget for the 4.2 million dollars for us to partner with the City of College Station was also a priority. And we have addressed and made, made that a, something that is in the works. I haven't, we haven't seen anything yet as far as whether we're going to be able to do that, but there was a commitment to do that. I just think that this is one-time money. It needs to be invested in Brazos County in order to benefit the largest number of people possible. And it needs to be put to use in a way that does not require additional maintenance and operations funds in order to be able to, you know, in, in the future, we're not creating a need for a revenue stream from our maintenance and operations. So that's where I've been all the way along. And I appreciate that. And I will go back and look at the five-year plan that we were presented from Road and Bridge, looking at by precinct projects and who and where they were and what those allocations were to be. And I will bring that back to the Court.
Mister, pardon me, pardon me. To my honorable colleague, you have advocated, it is important and we realize that. But every project that Road and Bridge brings to us is not funded, nor do we promise and not follow through. We, it was not done that way.
Your ideas have been presented to address the backlog of needs due to our county's growth, and those remedies have not been put into effect.
And that's.
And I'm frustrated with that because I have presented those remedies and they have not been put into effect.
Yes, again, you're correct. But we don't have the funds to do every project.
Well, if the remedies were there, we could have acquired the fund. It could have been done fiscally responsibly and reasonably. Now we have missed our window because interest rates have gone up and construction costs of material and labor have increased significantly. We're talking about, we're, we're talking about projects, we're talking about amendments to contracts to compensate for existing, for cost increases to providers. So obviously, we're in a different time and we've missed that window. I don't want to miss it anymore with the 33 and a half million dollars of eligible funds that we could use in order to benefit transit and mobility that's needed. I mean, obviously, you take a look at Elmo Whedon, Harper's Ferry, Old Reliance, all of those projects. We need to address those. And this is the type of money we need to focus with addressing that, this money on that now.
I realize that you're focused on precinct one mainly, but I.
No, that's not true. That is not true. That is certainly not true. And I respectfully disagree with you with that. I have the electorate of precinct one to be answerable and responsible for and to advocate for them. But you will not find any time that I have made this statement in the past, Judge, or any Commissioners. I challenge you to go back to the minutes and look and where I have said, there are not other issues that need to be addressed in other, in other precincts.
And certainly.
And I have said that. So don't go trying to put me into a position of being all about precinct one.
Well, we're talking about, you just mentioned the Greensbury, which is a 4 million dollar, and then this one's a 6 million dollar. And so, and there's other projects out there. And there's certainly lots of projects in every other one, every other precinct. So when we start talking about dollars, if, if, if we're not looking at the whole, all of them, then, then some precincts may fall short. I'm just telling you, it costs lots of money and, and we're talking about lots of roads throughout the county.
Okay, Katie has something to say.
I'm hearing from Commissioner's Court that rather than IGN being third priority on this list, that we would like to move it to second priority. Is that true? And with the other bridges and?
The amount and the fact that it fits into that because we're talking about the reconstruction of the road fits there. I do know that we have the responsibility to pay quite a bit of money for the relocation of Wellburn SUD's water line.
So, I'm sorry, let me, let me first point out a couple of things on how this list is organized. I think it's important to note that this is the strictest interpretation of each of these items. There is some flexibility in which items, some of them may fall in, some of them not so much. Some of them are what they are. There's no other component to it. A good example of this is going to even be the elder care and Are You Okay. That one could actually fall into a couple of different categories.
It's only $50,000.
Right. So I'm just using that as an example of, you know, it, it is very easy to, to do. So what we did when preparing this list is use the strictest interpretation. And we were basing it on information that was provided in the request for funding. So that is what this determination is made upon. For the IGN road in particular, that, the primary reason listed on our form is the water line relocation or utility relocation.
What percentage of that 4 and a half million did that comprise?
We don't know.
It did not state.
It, it did not state. So that's why we're here to discuss to you.
So you're saying placing it in this category, you don't have the information to do that, yet you've done that?
Look, we don't have the dollar amount broken out.
Sure.
The primary intent of this.
So why, why, why do we list it here as opposed to listing it where it fits more appro- appropriately because there's a road, if you don't know that the majority, you had earlier indicated when you had spoken that the, of the reason it was in this category was because of the water line and utility relocation, which puts it into the category of other public entities.
Sure. So that's based on just the wording.
Which other public entities is also in first priority category or Block Two?
Sure. So just based on the wording. But that's why we're here today as well, is to, to have this discussion, determine which projects, now that y'all do see what we have in front of you, as you'll recall, last week, we told you we were swinging blind, just to get a process down and an idea of where the projects would fall based on the identified community needs last week. This is how they shook out. We're here to decide if this is how they stay, if these are changes y'all want to make. You know, if, if the dollar amounts change, if the priorities change. We brought the board back with us. Now that you see what's in front of you and know how those fall, again, with the strictest interpretation based on the information we have in hand. And as Mark stated earlier, we are happy to go get additional clarification and get these questionable things.
We may have that information in the room here if Fred knows what, what that is from, just can recall what that is.
How many miles of relocation is it, Fred?
Sorry, I'm sorry, Fred, he's not going to pick you up if you don't come up.
I believe the water line relocation is a little over half a mile.
About a half mile.
And then the road widening and straightening out is almost same, same thing, like seven tenths of a mile.
Let's focus on the water line relocation because the project can't happen without doing that.
Correct.
If it's a half a mile, would you estimate $50,000, $100,000 to relocate that water line?
We have the estimate. I just don't remember it. Actually, when I was on the private side, did those plans and estimates. It's at my office here.
All right.
Shouldn't be more than-
Well, we can find that out. Yeah, easy enough.
Well, my apology, but I, I do, I don't believe that that's the proper categorization for IGN Stausland Greensboro Trail to Saville Creek.
Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you feel comfortable moving that from category three to category two?
I think it should be.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with that too. I, you know.
So we can move, I, I just, I don't, I don't want to be here till 3 o'clock this afternoon. So can we?
Well, I think I'm pretty well exhausted, so hopefully I won't go off again.
Okay, okay. Well, I'd like to just go back to number one, which is the medical examiner's office. I think, I think from previous discussion, we're all in agreement that that's something that we want to see happen.
Yes.
Is that correct? And if that's correct, I understand.
Commissioner, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a study and some site work. I don't, I don't want to allocate $20 million today of this money for that. But I, it is a priority for me also.
Okay.
I would, I would say that from my perspective, in the things that are in the first categorization for public health, that is my priority.
Yeah, mine too.
And mine also.
And I know that we've got some study, we've got some study to go ahead and do on that and that would be pending what those, those studies say.
Right. And with the medical examiner, today, you know, we have ARPA money to help build the building. We have Texas A&amp;M who's willing to participate. We have all those things kind of aligned that any other time, we wouldn't have the money to get it done, you know. And, and, and I, I believe over certainly the next 10 years, that is going to be something that the county will have to be doing. And today we, and I hear you. I know you're, you're not, you're not trying to say that's not. But so I just wanted to clarify that it really is a priority and I think, in my opinion, it's a priority. And, and I think today is the time we need to be looking at, trying to push forward with it.
No, I, I would agree completely with that. And the reason I think it's particularly advantageous to use this money because that would be an allocation that would fall under the Treasury guidelines to where we would be able to take care of that requirement of the funding and use of that money. But I also think that for us to be able to have the window of opportunity to be able to, if it proves to be something we want to pursue from the studies that come in, to do this without incurring any debt service, that's a unique opportunity.
It is.
In my book.
Yep, mine too.
And we don't disagree.
No.
Okay, I'm going to move over here to this other podium so that, or the other line. So another option that we have here today is if we want to change these amounts accordingly, to then say that while we do have the county and other as a priority and public health could then be assigned a value of 20 billion, which we know would cover the medical examiner's office. And then also we can rearrange or assign dollar values to these based on your desire and prioritization of the projects that are in front of you. And again, these are not decisions that have to be made today. These are things that can be thought about, continued discussions. But if we can get that agreement on items, then we will be back here with, you know, a request for court approval as an agenda item to move forward with the next steps for that project.
Sure.
So for instance, on the medical examiner's office, you know, if, if there is a desire to have a, any kind of feasibility study, any kind of preliminary architectural design, anything that we would need to get more information or hand and determine a better cost estimate for that item before moving on to others, we can do that. We are, we are here to serve you, to help you figure out the best way to spend this money while in compliance and serving the needs of your community.
Well, although mental health is, is critical, I'm not so sure that I'm willing to spend $15 million on a facility. I'd much rather partner with a private enterprise with that, would do a PPA, PPP. But the feasibility study of the sanctuary, we could do that now. And then depending upon the cost estimate, we have until the end of '24 to allocate those funds.
Yes.
So I would be in favor of moving forward with the feasibility study of the sanctuary remodel. And then seeing what it costs, we could decide if we wanted to allocate funds or not. But we don't know what it's going to cost to remodel the sanctuary. And so I'd be in favor of the feasibility study.
And so am I.
Yeah. But, and for instance, the 361st remodel, we need to take a look at that also.
At that also.
And could get architect or whatever and move, not necessarily allocate funds for that right now, but-
But at least know.
Uh, see what it, what it may cost to get all that kind of thing done.
Well, and I, I would go along with the feasibility study for the school district building and also the North Wing to get those feasibility studies because we're going to need more office space. We're going to need more, more training space. And so if we can get those feasibility studies done, then we, and we get them done in the, in the next year, then we can think about whether we want to allocate ARPA funds for it before '24.
I agree.
I believe the last time we did a study of our existing facilities was 2007? Was that the last one that we had done, that the county had done?
Sounds right.
So I'm not so sure whether we shouldn't, if it's eligible to do so, is, is take a look at the whole picture of what we've got and, and, and use that to look at our facilities because we're going to be acquiring the property that's on the east end of the parking garage over here within a year. There's space available there. I know some's used and some's not used, but we've also got a number of parcels of land that I think we need to make decisions on. So I think instead of, I'm not sure if, well, I just offer that maybe it would be time for us to allocate money towards a facility's use that, that covers the entire county as opposed to just looking at individual projects. I offer that as an alternative.
Well, in, in that 2007 study, we have, we have accomplished a lot of what we looked at in that study. Most of the JP Constables have their own location or it is in the process of being built. We've got this building and, you know, remodeled. So we, we took care of a lot of that. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. We just know some of the areas we've got and, you know, we can do the full-blown study. That's, I don't have a problem with that if that's what the court wants to do. It may take a while. It took us a while to get that. We had to, we pulled folks in from, out of the area to do that study and it took a while to get it done.
Well, but it's necessary.
Okay.
Just another thought. That facility, sorry, Sheriff.
The facility needs study from '07, '06 did help define about how many square footage, the square footage needed for different types, like conference room, offices, some of the bathroom need, anyway, other needs that go along with what kind, how you're staffing the building. We are gathering square footage of all the current empty spaces for budget this summer. So another option is to use those square footage and that we're, the information we're gathering with the facility needs assessment to come up with kind of our own. The hard part about a facility needs is, is everybody changes it after, you know. They say use this, this way and, and something else comes up because you need kind of a flexible document. And when you have one done, you have just that one. That's just a consideration.
Well, that sounds-
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I apologize. It sounds to me that we, Katie, could use the information you're gathering and do feasibility studies in conjunction and perhaps we'll have a better idea. I mean, you know, we're being accused of not making the better decisions, but we have done our best with what we had at the time and things have changed.
That's why I don't know that if you want to spend the money on a facility needs assessment. I'm pretty sure the feasibility study for the medical examiner's office has come in. And I think, what else was it? Oh, and it's not me doing the measuring, it's Colton. But he's going to all the empty spaces and measuring the square footage. And we've started looking at some of the things that are going to have to be done before we even consider the inside of any buildings.
What would you estimate that a comparable for now, comparable of what was done in 2007 or what's appropriate for what we need now? What would that total cost be? Do you-
I don't even remember what it was in '07. Who has my book?
Neither.
Who has my book?
I would, I would add to that though, Commissioners, that if we approve, for example, a study of the sanctuary, 364 First Court, BISD building, and there's one more in there somewhere, that those would all be components of a comprehensive study.
You could even do a study on just the empty spaces and growth. Because the other thing the facility needs helped us address was projected growth.
Roden Bridge Department Building Expansion could fit into that.
It says North Wing.
The, the North Wing, yes, the North Wing.
Yes. It's just maybe that instead of-
I just offered that because I think maybe we need to take a big look at the whole picture again.
I just don't know.
It seems reasonable if we were talking about $300,000 for all of those items. If we've got $50,000 each for four of them and then to pull those together into a comprehensive study, we might be talking about $350,000, $400,000.
That just sounds like an awful lot on a comparative basis.
I'm really afraid what a full facility needs assessment would cost.
Well, maybe we can look into that for further conversations as to whether or not to look at these individualized items as far as feasibility, things that are there. I do believe that we're already, we've got, okay, the process is underway for Medical Examiner's Office and that's already been, been done. But we need to, yeah. Let's just, I, I would be pleased if we could consider it both, you know, from a overall perspective to me.
Also to remember, we're in the process of doing a strategic financial budget. And that's going to help determine what our, our needs are in terms of space and office space and, and personnel going forward. So, and that's in process. I don't know exactly when it, it'll be completed. Friday, it's going to be done?
Yeah, they'll be there pretty in October and then maybe three, three days. The first round of departments are due Friday. The first round of departments are due Friday. And give us a week or so to compile all the information and then we can heat it out. So, and then the next round will probably start maybe after budget has been adopted in October and then we'll continue on.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I agree with you on the mental, the mental health. I, I don't know that there's going to be a need to build a building because there's discussions going on about potentially trying to do something in an existing facility. So, you know, we may not need that, that money for-
For a building.
Judge, if I may, because I brought that matter to the attention of the court, I don't suggest that we just throw money at a project. I think 15 million is too much, but I think Brazos County should invest in services for mental health.
No question.
Now, listen, we're all looking on TV of a person that take, that kills 19 students and two teachers.
And his grandmother.
And his own grandmother. Surely somebody should have noticed and offered him some services, some of some sort. And that's all I'm saying. It is happening all around us. And because we're not affected, we don't think about it.
We all are affected.
We are all affected. And I'd like to provide more services for mental health. And I'm not saying 15 million. No way.
No.
Well, there was a great article about mental health courts that was in the last county magazine. And so this is a concern that is, awareness is there. Even the state of Texas appropriated $283, I think, million in Senate Bill Eight to try to address this. And that's a very big turn from the way the state of Texas funding towards mental health had been going.
That's true.
So I think coming out of all of this, I just don't know that we're ready. In my mind, I don't know if we've got a picture of what we need to be able to do yet in order to allocate any of these funds that would be available for expenditure or needed to be expenditure before the end of '26. But we certainly need to be looking at alternatives.
Just so the court is aware, I think one of our county court at law judges was putting a mental health court approach together before COVID. And COVID derailed it. So it has been considered. And I'm going to throw this out there and Trailer, don't kick me. It seems like maybe we need Trailer to interview the, gather more information on the requests because mental health facility isn't what was said on the, on the backup documentation. It was more of a, a joint effort.
Yes.
And so it wasn't, no, I don't know where facility came. I came from the backup, but I don't know that that's what's the intent.
And you're right. You're correct.
And the same thing with water line. And, and so maybe we need to gather some more information on these projects or have Trailer gather, interview the people who submitted the projects to get a more clear picture of what they're asking for.
Yeah. Absolutely. Mental health services are critical and we need to address those. But I don't think we need a, a physical plant for it.
No, it's not the building.
Well, and the difference is, is with Medical Examiner's Office, the county has to run that.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, there is statutory requirement for that, for mental health. We haven't, I, I just don't think we've put everything together on the picture that we want to approach.
And that, that was a broad statement that we have on that. My understanding of the original discussion was, in conjunction with maybe the sheriff's office as a holding facility for the people who, well, it doesn't say so. Some of the items kind of have gotten combined between notes and then the requests. Because more information has been given during some of our discussions with the commissioners and the judge. And, you know, so we can certainly come back if we want to, you know, set aside X amount today for mental health services while we determine, you know, best use of those funds. You know, is it supporting an agency that's already in that business? You know, is this something that the county wants to enter into as a support service that they, you know, expand upon something that's already existing, create a new department? You know, any of these things are options certainly available to you. But we can, we can certainly set some money aside while we figure it out. Or we can come back to it, whichever you prefer. You tell me.
I would leave something plugged in there because we really don't know. I mean, we're not sure exactly.
I'd leave a million dollars in there maybe.
Maybe 2 million, but that's just a, an idea. That's the dream amount. It would be 2, but not 15.
Yeah.
And we're not saying we're going to spend 2 million.
Exactly. You're just setting it aside.
Right.
So 2 million is the dollar amount we want to assign to that today then? For mental health services.
I'd be okay with that.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
And again, that's why we're here, y'all, to, to hash these things out, to figure out, have these discussions. And this is actually great for us, if we're still able to come back with more information. So the medical examiner's office, mental health services, and then the feasibility studies for the buildings. And of course, we will also find out the cost comparison between those four buildings, maybe five if we include the Roden Bridge Department building expansion in that. The cost comparison between a facility needs assessment period versus those individually. Okay?
We are already doing the Roden Bridge.
Fred Payne's my name.
Maybe we need to just.
Address please.
We need to just mic everybody in the room and then you can turn them on.
I'd rather not talk.
Name, address, social security number.
What is it? The Architect RFQ is posted tomorrow. So we're going to do the needs assessment and, and feasibility for how to best address the Roden Bridge and Heavy Fleet. So we're already, that's midway, I say, that process has begun.
So the next question is?
And those funds are allocated in this year's budget?
Yes, ma'am.
So ARPA funds will not be needed for that project?
Right.
Okay. Okay, so just roughly then, if we look at the funds that are being considered right now and inside the county and other public entities, public health, that's pointing to give us just over 22 million of the 35 million that we've kind of set aside for that purpose. Of course, moving down the list, what about the Emergency Operations Center 911 facility? Does that then get bumped up? Is that a wish list item for later to determine how much money we have left in this category? Is this a let's look at other things before we come back to that? And how do y'all feel about the, the EOC center in particular?
I think it's further down the road than.
So what's my percentage of the fee? Anyway. I was going to point out that you might want to consider what is easier to qualify for the grant because now we're talking about what to substitute above the line. I think that, in my opinion, partnerships with other entities are harder to prove on grant funds than they are on lost revenue funds.
They're harder to document, not necessarily harder to prove, but there is a little bit more documentation that's required. And, and it's going to depend on how it is set up, whether we make someone a separate recipient of funds or whether we provide a contract directly for some services. So there, there are some considerations, particularly when it comes to recording those funds.
And so a recipient will affect our external audit costs.
And so I think where we're at on the EOC 911, right now, the discussion today is, and that certainly can change, is that someone might build that building and then county, the two cities, the university, everybody would then lease from them, much like what's going on today. But I, today, I don't think we're looking at a, at funding that building. But, I mean, all these discussions are, you know, still kind of in the middle and we just, I mean, we're not sure. But that's, today, that's where I think we stand, is that someone else might build the building and then we'd lease from them.
So the sanctuary remodel, 361st court remodel are taken care of. They kind of move above the, the priority line there where the funding ran out now. And what about the HVAC and air purification system? And again, keep in mind that everything you see on here is something that someone said along the way. That doesn't mean necessarily there was a tremendous amount of support. But one of you mentioned it, it made it to this list. In some way, shape, form, or fashion, now as we have seen, it may not have been exactly what was intended. But it is, you know, open for discussion and determination of is this a priority?
And we're moving up the feasibility study for the Bryan School District Building and the North Wing renovation into priority one, the feasibility studies.
Correct, correct. Those are going to be on it.
I think they were all grouped.
Yep.
That's my understanding.
Well, and to me, the HVAC purification is, I, I think really that was shown to be a really a great way to try to combat, whether it's COVID viruses, that sort of thing. And it's the, to me, it's the jail that where we have folks in there and we got staff in there and, and that's where, you know, and they've got no choice. We've got to have them in there. I mean, with all the other departments, while it would be nice to, you know, to make that purification system work, but, but with the jail, there's no choice. You've got inmates in there, you've got to keep them in there and you've got to have staff with them. So if we were going to look at anything, I think to me, that would be the priority to look at. I don't have any idea what it would cost to get that done. But it would have made, I think, life a lot more easy for, for the jailers and, and the jail if, if they'd have had a system out there. And I know that they've got a small system there in booking already. That's, that was put in place, I don't remember, sometime back. And, and we were really pretty successful keeping COVID out, you know. And they, they did a great job doing that. But, I mean, that might be something that while it may not be the top priority, it still probably should be on the list and that's where we ought to count, take a look. And it, it might, would take up all the money if we even talked about it. I don't know. You know, I don't know what it costs.
Judge, I, I do agree that it is important. I would like to also offer that we not only consider the jail, but we have a juvenile detention center where our juveniles are held also. And staff also dealt with those concerns. So we need to broaden it, please. That's my idea.
Well, can we put out an RFP for what it would cost to put in a purification system in the jail and, and the juvenile? We, we could do that.
Ernest may know off the top of his head. I say that as a joke, Ernest.
Another thing that was discussed early on was the Health Department also. Let's keep that in mind.
Yep, yep. Okay.
So the question is to Charles, the RFP.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't cost us anything to put out an RFQ or RFP for the proposals on what it would cost to put in those purification systems. And then we know what we're talking about.
So we're addressing a concern that Charles could help us with.
Yep.
I call your name because you were looking around. I wasn't sure that you knew we were giving you some work.
Put your sunglasses on, Charles.
Put your cap on.
So per se, that's going to stay as a priority that may come out based on the potential costs.
Yeah.
Is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Yep. So we're taking out the mental health facility and the ECOC 911 facility out of those priorities.
Wait, may I suggest mental health facilities be removed, but mental health services stay?
Yep.
And that's, that's my hope right there.
Yep.
So, there you go. And let's see, Wesley, if you will move that EOC or strike through it for now and we'll get just a red. It's hard to see y'all.
It is.
Because the cursor is even difficult when we're standing over there.
I'm going to shade it red for right now because I cannot see that far.
So.
With the strike through button.
Realistically, we're, you know, the, the sanctuary remodel and the 361st court remodel, they've been moved up right now. That's, that's not funding or committing at this moment. So right now, if it appears we're at 23 and a half, probably 24 million. Does that look, 24 million roughly?
Well, in the medical examiner's office, I think a preliminary has looked like the upper end would be 22 and a half, something like that was, and that's to, and it's preliminary, there's a draft. It's not, they hadn't come out with it yet, but that was the first number that, that it looked like. But that would be, with all the furniture, fixtures, everything that goes in there, that should be a.
And may I add, Judge, when we initially worked with the court on this same project, it was a lot less. And that goes to say to Commissioner Aldrich, he's absolutely right. We haven't been able to take advantage of the, the situation. Yeah, but we're doing our very best.
If I may inject one thing, I want to urge our consultant, which I know they are and that's why they're here today, but the Commissioners' Court as well, to delineate or specify, to narrow the scope of some of these projects that you want to do because time is of the essence to, to do the solicitations.